Reading called order is now 7:00 PM. It's March 5th. Town Council meeting in the Town Council chambers, 1170 Main Street, West Warwick, Rhode Island. John, you lead us in prayer.
Bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, we have gathered here this evening as your humble servants. We seek to represent the good citizens of West Warwick with honor and integrity. May all of our efforts be blessed with your wisdom. May our personal faith give us the strength to act honestly and accordingly in all matters that come before us. Amen.
Jay, we're using the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilwoman Lichardi?
Here.
Councilwoman Williamson?
Here.
Councilman Messier?
Here.
Council Vice President D'Amico?
Yes.
Council President Goslin?
Here.
There is a quorum. Marking presentation regarding FY '18 audit report.
Good evening.
Good evening. How are you?
How are you doing today?
We did prepare an outline, I believe it's in a packet that was circulated. A brief number of, short slide deck. Again, the purpose is just to spend a few minutes reviewing the June 30th, 2018 financial statement audit results. Please feel free to ask questions at any time. I'm sure you've seen a complete copy of the financial statements and the like. Questions come up, they're welcome. Beginning on page three of the handout, just a few highlights on the Town's general fund. For the fiscal year ended, again, June of '18, the fund balance in the general fund increased by a little better than $775,000. At the end of the year, the unassigned or the free, unencumbered working capital balance was just over $962,000. Good news, there was an increase in the fund balance during the year. Still kind of tempered by that, you know, the balance of that is relatively low compared to, you know, benchmarks of rating agencies look for eight to 12, even 16 percent of your budget to be in working capital. Good first step, good step to start building. Hopefully that momentum can continue. Flipping onto page four of the outline, again, you can see the trend in fund balance over the last six years. Again, this is strictly just the Town's general fund. It hit the low point of '17 and bounced back almost to the level of '16. And actually, the unassigned is the highest it's been in the past three years, so.
You just want to state that number again?
Sure. The unassigned is $962,000, just under $1 million.
Mr. President, if I may, Jim, a question. When you look at the trend here of the uses of fund balance, each and every year going down and down and down, as an auditor, when you see that trend, what does that tell you? What would you say when you see that?
You know, certainly expenditures were outpacing revenues during those periods. I think the town did make some good decisions, we'll get to a little bit later in the packet. The pension contributions for the past four years have been fully funded in accordance with the actuaries' recommendation. You know, certainly decisions could have been made to short fund the pension and keep more funds in the general fund. Those decisions, for the long-term health of the community, are good to, you know, continue funding that pension benefit. That's certainly not going to go away, it's an astronomical number. And I think you're looking at revenue sources and the like. You know, tax revenues have been relatively strong the past number of years.
When you, I know as an auditor, when you come into a community, you review the ordinances, charters, and so on. You know, the charter requires balanced budgets. It also requires an ordinance to ensure that balanced budgets are there. And from what I've seen, those ordinances up until FY '17 weren't really in existence. So, you know, as an auditor, as well as, I know the state law requires notification if there's going to be a deficit. So when you look at the state law and the local ordinances, it would seem that, you know, there should have been or could have been some type of warning or acknowledgement. You know, we're going in a, not a good situation when you look at that trend.
Right.
So what would your feeling be when you looked at that issue in regards with our ordinances and the state statute about notification of deficits spending?
I think, looking back, when, again, we've been the auditors for a number of years, looking back at the quarterly, you know, the budget reports and stuff like that that were, you know, sent to the state, sometimes the end of the year, there were significant adjustments that required. You know, sometimes that deficit wasn't projected early enough in the year, so where proactive steps could have been taken. You know, there were a lot of moving parts within the budgets, a lot of, you know, unanticipated items. I know that, you know, the town's been working with, you know, the five-year plan to restore fiscal stability. We've seen that been kept in mind. But certainly at the end of the year, you know, the year-end adjustments and closing certainly didn't come into agreement with what those plans had been.
How often do, I mean, just looking at this trend going downwards, is this something where it's, do you monitor this on a regular basis? Or is this something like, at the end of the year, you do the report and say, "This is where you stand." And, "All right, we're in a deficit again, we're going down." And then next year, same thing. And can you put the brakes on midstream? Is that something?
Certainly, our role as the auditor is to audit the financial statements as of the end of the year, that snapshot on June 30th.
That's the finance department, who should be keeping track of our spending and department heads and the town manager. So midstream, they are responsible for bringing that before the council, or whatever it may be. The auditor just puts it on paper of what the end result is.
Yeah. Much more of a scorekeeper rather than an active participant in the management of the budget.
All right. All right, thanks.
Now, again, moving on to page five, again, this is strictly for the fiscal year that just closed. You know, revenues were above budgeted amounts by about $453,000. Property taxes, including interest and payments and lieu taxes, a little bit below what was anticipated. What we saw there is a collection of prior year balances, the actual collection of current year balances was right on point with what the budget assumption was. Some of those older taxes that, you know, there's still liens in place and are collectible, but just have not been coming in as anticipated. You know, certainly based on the current year levy, there was a little over 100 percent when you factor in those prior years, but I think the budget calls for a little bit better collection on the old balances.
Can I ask you how those percentages, collection assumptions, how they stack up against other communities and other work you've done?
The towns in West Warwick are pretty comparable to the other communities we do. Between 97 and 99 percent current year assessment collection rate, you have to factor in some cushion for just appeals of the assessments when they're done. Economic conditions, certainly sometimes we'll see, you know, when the overall economy drops down, that collection rate can fall, you know, 92, 93 percent, just based on, you know, free cash flow with households and whatnot. In relatively good times, you know, I've never seen anybody anticipate better than like a 98 or 99 percent collection rate on current year assessments alone. I think that's a sound, reasonable assumption.
But you also don't see 92 percent typically either.
No. No, and certainly the town hasn't been in that position either, other than when everybody is suffering and the economy as a whole is weak. You know, overall expenditures were below appropriated amounts by about $267,000. We're always looking at where the overages were, you know, retirement, insurance, fire department, legal, and certainly, you know, nothing that we saw there displayed a, you know, lack of control or a lack of reasonable assumptions in the budget. Sometimes things just turn out differently than what the assumptions have been, so. No structural issues, just actual expenditures for the year were in excess. Moving on to the school department, the school department ended its year with a total fund balance of just under $3,850,000. 183 of that's not in expendable format, represented by prepaid expenses and inventory. So it's just about $3,664,000 that's been committed to continue funding the educational budget. The fund balance decreased in the current year by about $507,000. However, that decrease incorporates two pretty big items that were not in the original budget. The school department transferred almost $920,000 to its capital reserve fund, again, continuing their practice of investing their fund balance in long-term assets, and then also transferred some excess funding to the healthcare fund. Without those, the school department would have shown an increase in its fund balance of about $1,270,000 for the year, so. You know, the school did recognize grant funds, just under $2.5 million, a supplement to the educational program. And overall, revenues at the school were about $386,000 above anticipated amounts. Again, in both cases, with the Town General Fund and the school, you know, the budgeting of revenues appears to be conservative, there's no outlandish, you know, plans put in place, so to see the positive results on the revenue side is expected. The school department, you know, expenditures and other financing uses were, you know, just about $36,000 within what the budget was. Again, not factoring in those two big items that were transferred to other funds. And the school lunch fund, again, had a solid year recognizing a small amount of net income that's generally, again, reinvested back in capital assets with the lunch program. This slide on page nine shows the combined fund balances. A lot of the rating agencies will look at combined town and school fund balances put together, treating the town as kind of one operation. Again, the total fund balance there has been relatively consistent over the past five or six years, just about that $5 million mark. And you can see the blue line on the bottom where the town is making up a larger portion of that at the end of the '18 fiscal year. The two funds are legally separate, and again, the town doesn't have capacity to go dip into that fund balance, but again, from a rating agency perspective, looking at overall finances, they do get aggregated together in many cases, so. You know, it tells a good story against stability in that total of those two funds. The wastewater authority has some highlights on the 10th page of the outline. Revenues and expenditures up and down a little bit from prior years, but still a solid year financially there. While the fund did record a decrease in its net assets for the year, almost $2.5 million of expensive depreciation, which is a non-cash item, when you look at a budgetary basis, the fund was near break-even results again. At the end of the year, the wastewater fund had net equity of just over $40 million, just over $33 million was invested in capital assets, and about $7 million was unrestricted net assets that can be used, again, to, at the board's discretion. We mentioned earlier the town's pension plan, again, in the June 30th, July 1st, '18 valuation. It's reporting the highest funded percentage it has in the past several years, just about 23 percent, up from just under 21 the previous year, and you can see 18 and 19 prior to that, so. Again, the investment returns were positive, and again, having those contributions being made full for the past four or five years, again, accumulating more assets there, the results of compounding and the investment earnings have certainly benefited the fund's
So we're up 2 percent from last year. Looking at this, it's the last three years, it's 2 percent per year. Trying to think of how to ask this. If we happen to dip down from the 22, at what point is the red flag going to go up from you guys?
It's more of a long-term perspective on that. Certainly, the liability is treated more like a mortgage, it's a long-term liability to be retired over that basis. You know, the actuary results, they will smooth in contributions, what those investment returns are, so if there's a real good year, you won't get the benefit of that all in one year, that'll be smoothed over a number of years, as will if the benchmarks come in below. And I think the strongest thing there is just to continue funding the required contribution that the actuaries specify. You know, it would take, I think, from an auditor perspective, to raise a flag on where the health of that fund's going, it would be more than a one-year blip.
Okay.
If there were a couple, if there was a shortage in funding, if there were, you know, an experience study showed that maybe the assumptions aren't valid for the fund as far as mortality and investment returns and pay raises and stuff like that. Certainly, we haven't seen that in auditing those assumptions to date now.
So you're saying if we increase by the 2 percent, say, per year for the next three years or so, are we going to be safe? Is it, a lot of questions that have come up, and a lot of the rumors that are going around, is the pension plan's in big trouble. So when does it become extremely, are we talking about people who have pensions, people who are working, who are going to be receiving pensions?
Mm-hmm.
At what point are we in critical, critical status where we may not have any money at all?
I know, as part of the valuation of the plan, there's a cash flow projection of what expected benefits are for periods in the future, and there's also projections of what contributions are going to be required to meet those assumptions. Where the contributions are now, they may get a little bit higher, but it certainly, on a pay-as-you-go basis, we haven't seen anything in the projections that there's going to be an immediate lack of funding, the fund's going to run out of money.
Okay.
Provided those contributions continue to be made at the full funding level to retire those shortages in prior years and results and whatnot.
So if we have a mass exodus of, and I'm, again, I'm trying to understand this a little better, if we have a mass exodus of employees that retire, just say, June 30th, and 10, 15, 20 people retire, obviously we have to hire people in their place. To me, understanding, I think I'm understanding this right, I think that's a problem. You have people who are, you have a new employee that comes in, and please, if I'm not saying this right, please stop me. You have a new employee that comes in and contributes, say, $5,000 towards the pension fund, but you have an employee that just left and is getting a $30,000 pension. So to me, that's a negative of $25,000. And then you have 15, 20 people doing this. To me, it just doesn't add up.
Certainly, that would be a case where we'd look at what the assumptions are for retirements each year. The actuarial evaluation projects that certain people are going to retire at or about their retirement age. There may be some factors in there for some earlys. If there was a flood of earlys, it's certainly going to change the metrics on what the future cash flow projection is going to be for paying out retirees.
Okay.
It's all based on the age of people when they join the plan, the age they are at the valuation date, how much they're vested, what their projected benefit's going to be, and giving the plan enough time to fund those over time, so at their retirement date, those assets are available.
Okay.
Certainly, the plan does have a, you know, pension liability of $127 million at the end of the year. You know, if you were 60 percent funded, I think everybody would feel a lot better about where the plan is. Again, it's a very long-term view of this, it's not an asset that gets retired like a car loan over five years, it's very much a mortgage. There's, you know, you need 30 or 40 years to fund someone's full retirement benefit. And you're making up, you know, shortages in funding in prior years with the level of funding you're doing now, the, you know, $9 or $10 million of annual contributions to that plan to catch yourself up from those prior shortages.
Do you work with Nye Hart at all to look at those assumptions and make sure they're valid?
We audit the assumptions, yes.
Yes.
And certainly, we recommend, you know, periodically, experienced studies to see what the actual experience is on retirees, mortality, pension, you know, raise increases. I know they're recommending that as well, you know, every five, seven, 10 years to take another look at those assumptions. We compare those assumptions, when we test participants, we're testing what their data hire is, their age, verifying their projected retirement date. We're also comparing the expected rate of return to what the actual asset investment mix is, and what other communities are using for that rate of return. Those all go into what that required contribution is each year, so. If there were differences there, they would be reported as findings, and they have not come up.
And you mentioned 60 percent, which is a general benchmark where you start to feel that you are healthy. Obviously, everybody would like to be 100 percent funded, but that's not realistic.
But at 60, you could survive, you know, a retirement of 50 or 60 people going out early or something like that, more than likely.
Okay.
And again, you can see on that 13th slide on the deck, you can see where the contributions have been the past 11 years, with the blue columns being what actual contributions to the plan were, and the reds being what the actuaries required to be put in those plans. You can see that, you know, in 2012, for instance, there was maybe $1 million put in on an $8.5 million required contribution. There's a lot of catch-up to be done to, and this is only the last 11 years, we haven't looked back on what prior was, but.
And how come the 16 returned 5.92, 17 was 12.3, 18 was a little less than that, quite a bit less than that. How does that stack up against other communities?
That's right in line where everybody, I mean, everybody's investing in about the same investment classes and vehicles.
And what is a typical mix, equity versus?
That changes every couple of years. It's, you know, there's about 10 or 12 different categories that get blended into that. I know this, don't have that off the top of my head, but we could certainly get back to you with what we're seeing other communities do, but again, we've looked at the rate of returns are comparable across our client base, so. The other post-deployment benefit plan that the town maintained, there have actually been contributions to that plan, at the end of the year, there's just under $1,505,000 of investable assets there. That is something that's, gives credit to the town, a lot of other communities haven't funded anything towards their benefits. While this may not look like a lot compared to the overall liability of, you know, $60 million, it's a start. And certainly, there's, and again, other decisions that were made to put money there that could have stayed in the general fund and built up the general fund's fund balance, so. While they're not in the general fund pocket, they are still within the town's reporting entity as assets that are going to fund the town going forward. During the course of our audit, again, I want to thank management from the town and school department and wastewater fund for the cooperation. The audit was delivered on time, everything went smooth, there were no disagreements. We do recognize that even when that happens, the audit's an invasive process, and it's tough on everybody involved, so. I want to thank everyone for putting up with us and helping us out and giving us access to the records and closing the books. We had no significant audit adjustments, no material weaknesses or deficiencies of controls that were noted. We do have some recommendations that have been kind of repeated the past couple of years, look at, you know, documentation of internal controls. One from a study of effectiveness and efficiency, as well as having a documentation there for this turnover, if there's new employees to be trained, there's a manual on how things are to be done. It's not uncommon, we have very few communities that have full comprehensive manuals. It's a goal that we recommend everybody at least consider and start building on, but we do also recognize that there's a day job for everybody to do in these finance departments, and there's not a lot of extra time for these activities, so. We do make that, just, we take it when you can, so. Are there any other questions I might be able to answer, or take back and get you answers on the follow-up?
Any questions from the council? Any concerns? Anything from the public on this presentation?
I would say it's nice to see that we're going in the right direction, but I think, and we talked about trends, one year does not make a trend, it's positive, but we saw a trend in the other direction, and it's nice that it was turned around, and I know it was a lot of hard work by a lot of people to do that, so we do need to continue on that path.
A lot of tough decisions are made each year.
Mr. Manager, any comment?
Just want to thank Jim and your staff, you know, who are working with us. I know this is our third year, so it's been a pleasure, you know, working with you and your staff, and, you know, we will be going out for proposals for a new auditing firm, you know, three-year contracts, so, you know, hopefully, we'll throw a proposal in, and we'll see where we go, but I want to thank you for your service and the cooperation, and your staff has worked with us very well, so thank you.
Great, thanks. We'll certainly throw a hat in the ring, and hopefully we'll be back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Have a good night.
Removal of Jerry Lake from the West Warwick Pension Board, sponsored by Councilman Messier, resolved at the Town Council, hereby removes the following individual, Jerry Lake, from the West Warwick Pension Board.
Move the resolution.
A second.
Move in second, discussion. Council Vice President John D'Amico is going to read something to the record for us, on behalf of Jerry Lake.
Okay, so bear with me, it is a little bit long and lengthy, but obviously important to hear. This is March 1st, 2019. To the members of the West Warwick Town Council, members of the West Warwick Pension Board, members of the IBPO Local 312, members of the IAFF Local 1104, members of the AFSCME Local 2045, and to all residents of the Town of West Warwick. In light of recent events that have transpired over the last month regarding my appointment to the Pension Board, it has weighed heavily on me that certain members of the community, members of the local unions, and members of the council have requested and some demanded my resignation or dismissal from the Pension Board. This is not something I take lightly, nor did I find humor in this matter. Upon seeing the Town Council's agenda for the upcoming Tuesday, March 5th, 2019, where Councilman Jason K. Messier sponsored an item requesting the council to remove me from an appointed position, in which clearly violates the Rhode Island Constitution of an individual's civil liberties and will violate the Town Charter, I am left with a very difficult decision to make based upon the following questions. One, what were my intentions when I made the decision to apply for the Pension Board? Two, did I personally allow this matter to go too far, and/or could it have been prevented? Three, did my appointment to the Pension Board bring any benefit to the town? Let me start off by responding to the first question, which was, what were my intentions and when I made my decision to apply for the Pension Board? My intentions were of the simplest and of the purest in nature. I have been a resident of the town for nearly five years. In those five years, I have heard conflicting statements and concerns pertaining to the pension of those employed by the town. These contradicting statements were grave concern to me, not only as a resident and taxpayer, but also as a neighbor and friend to these individuals and all residents of our community. I would ask myself, what is the real answer? Who is sharing the correct information? Who has or is responsible for such a depleted pension system? How will the employees of our town be compensated if the pension system fails after giving away so many concessions on so many occasions in hopes of putting our town in a better financial state? How will the taxpayers be affected if the pension system fails? So I concluded that the best way to address these concerns was to get the information firsthand. I recently agree, I am no financial wizard, but indisputably, I have the means and ability to educate, research, and dissect the information to obtain a logical and factual result. Were all of the past highly educated financial experts now, excuse me, where are all the past highly educated financial experts now? And how are their decisions from the past benefiting our employees and retirees today? Do I believe I could also serve on the Pension Board in an unbiased manner without being influenced by political or outside pressures? Considering recent events, I emphatically do. Now we come to question two. Did I allow this matter to go too far, and could it have been prevented? This question has weighed heavily on me from the onset and the continuous slew of negative social media posts and negative news media stories against myself. Clearly, I could have avoided all of this by simply not applying for the position, but by not applying, I would not be able to get appointed and get the answers that I felt were still in question. However, I do believe that everything that has transpired has done so for a reason. Whatever reasons they are, they will eventually come to light. Personally, I believe it has gone as far as it is needed to thus far. I have withstood all of the personal attacks and intimidation that one should never have to face due to political backlash. So the question is, would I change how I handled the situation? No, I wouldn't. Not because of an ego, rather my response to question three can help sum it up. Question three was, did my appointment to the Pension Board bring any benefit to our town? Undeniably, it has brought no benefit to the pension itself or the Pension Board. However, it has unequivocally brought changes to our town that will be a benefit to the town, moving us forward toward a better future. Our Town Charter and ordinances are now finally under scrutiny and should be revised and updated to adhere to the Rhode Island Constitution. The process of how we select and appoint members to boards are being reviewed in policies and procedures we would put into place to vet all candidates, in the process that will take place after they have been appointed. I do not take sole responsibility for these changes. It was certainly an unintentional group effort. As you are all aware, nearly 17 years ago, I was arrested and charged with a felony, a crime that I am not proud of, and at that time was disgusted with myself for my actions, but I always said, "I own my past." The way I see it, the past has brought forth some good fraud town. It has opened dialogue between individuals to when, has a human being, excuse me, a human being served their sentence of penance, and how we still allow ourselves to judge individuals today for their actions from long ago. And when do we accept that an individual has paid their price to society? And when do we acknowledge that their past actions have no bearing on the individual they have become today before you? In addition, it has also showed us how ugly we can become when we allow our personal conflicts and dirty politics to steer us away from the path of acceptance and compromise. When do we, as residents and neighbors, finally come together for the greater good of our town and community and set aside these differences? When do we recognize that our town deserves better? When do you realize that a community united can overcome the struggle that we have before us to see our town into the future? Hopefully, the answer to the question for all of us Hopefully, the answer to the question for all of us is today. Let us come together as a community and work together with our elected officials to put the interest of our town first. So, let me be the first to make that gesture in putting the best interests of the Town of West Warwick first and ensuring that we do not allow a precedent to be set that allows elected officials from overstepping their powers while compromising the oath they swore to uphold or violating the Rhode Island Constitution of the Town Charter or ordinances of West Warwick. If I allow a vote to take place that would remove me from my appointed position on the Pension Board, a precedent would be set that would allow the council to remove any board or committee at will. By allowing this, we would then forego the intent of such boards and committees and relinquish all powers to the council unless challenged in litigation. Our town needs no further litigations against it. It needs individuals to do right by our town, and for that reason alone, in the best interests of the town, I hereby resign from the Pension Board. Sincerely, Jerry Lee, a proud West Warwick resident.
Thank you, Council. So, this letter of resignation should be accepted from the Town Council and the Town Council should not remove Jerry Lee from the board. The letter of resignation will, I think, is acceptable.
Is there a motion that you'd like? I make a motion to accept the resignation of Jerry Lee.
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry. Again, I apologize on behalf of the council that the town employees, Mr. Lee, and the residents of West Warwick had to go through this over the last three weeks on news media and social media and wherever else it may have taken place. Unfortunately, through all this, there are other people who decided to withdraw their names from boards because of what has happened over the past few weeks, and that is the honest truth right there. So, please, watch your comments from the crowd, please. And I have the clerk to confirm that if you'd like, and I can give you names if you'd like.
Want to give them more arrogant?
No, I'm not being arrogant, Mr. Reed. Thank you. No comment from the crowd, or that's your first warning? Thank you. So, with that being said, Mr. Lee is resigned. Thank you. Move on to the next slide.
Ordinance 2019-1, first reading sponsored by Council President Goslin and ordinance amending appendixy traffic ordinances of the Code of Ordnances of the Town of West Warwick, stop sign on Atwood Street at Alpine Street and Navarre Street at Alpine Street.
I'll move the ordinance.
Second.
Move in second, discussion. Again, this is something that was brought up to me during election time. A lot of vehicles, including school buses or ride buses actually, go right through the intersection. So, I brought it before the Traffic Committee did this study and they agreed upon it. So, with that being said, that's all I'm asking for is a stop sign between Alpine and Navarre and Summit and Alpine. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call vote. Jay?
Yes.
Jay?
Yes.
Mary Beth?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Can I vote yes?
Calling on General Assembly to pass enabling legislation for municipal tobacco licensing, sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Move the resolution.
Ordinance. I mean, sorry, this is the resolution.
My second.
Al?
Where this came about was, as the council knows, seven years ago, we had great cooperation from the students in the high school, and we enacted what we thought was a great piece of legislation, ordinance, I'll say restricting the sale of tobacco products to children. You know, in a nutshell, that was what it was about. That had also been done in the cities of, the city of Warwick, Town of Corinth, Tiverton, Cranston, Providence, Richmond, West Warwick, Middletown, Barrington, Johnston, and Wensaco. So, we had all, the ordinances aren't all the same, but they basically all had the same purpose, protect the children of your community from the sale of tobacco products. Certain tobacco dealers in the Town of Barrington and the Town of Middletown brought the matter to the Superior Court, and the Superior Court in those two cases said that the state legislature has taken over the entire tobacco regulation area that the municipalities have no say in it. So, the city of Central Falls has gone forward with a resolution, and they are sending it to the General Assembly that be it resolved that the city council, the city of Central Falls urges the General Assembly to pass a law enabling legislation for cities and towns to license tobacco dealers. Basically, what they're saying is, and I've been following both cases and dealing with the attorneys on them, the position the attorneys are taking is, you know, it's nice to have a state law, but in each community, we know our community best, and we know the way that our merchants are, we know the way that what can be done and what can't be. Let us have the say on the legislation of regulating tobacco. When I received that copy of the resolution from Central Falls to the legislature, I contacted David and I suggested to David that I thought that we ought to join in and that we ought to send a resolution to the legislature. And all the resolution says is, we are supporting Central Falls and we're asking you, the legislature, to do the same thing that Central Falls is doing, and that's what's before you tonight, to join in Central Falls and ask the legislature to allow you to regulate the tobacco sales in our town.
Do you know if the other communities you mentioned are also going to go this route and join?
I don't know whether they've joined Central Falls or not. I know in my discussion with other attorneys, some of them have taken the stand, we're going to continue on and we're going to just ignore the Superior Court until they tell our town to stop. Others have said, well, we're just going to go slow until the Supreme Court has a say. The only one I have actively heard from that has taken this step and the initiative was the city of Central Falls. So, it was a matter, I don't know who else is joining in. It would not surprise me that others will do what I'm requesting the council to do.
Is there any downside? I mean, I know the students put a lot of work to it and I see the superintendent is here.
Scott is here too.
So, a lot of work has, had gone into it and a presentation was made here to the council.
On several occasions. And I have to say that in the years that I've been here and drafting the ordinances for the town, I have never had, anything I've done that I received the cooperation, the input and the assistance from these students in the high school. They did their homework, they came in, and the regulation we passed, there's nothing drastic about it. Yes, if you want to talk about a license fee being drastic, that's one thing, but all we're saying, all we've said to the merchants is, if you're going to sell tobacco, put it behind a counter, put it in a place where the kids can't go in and get it and make sure that they get it.
Sorry to interrupt you. Can I ask what they're challenging, which portion of the ordinance they're challenging? Is it the fee?
They, no, they've just struck down the ordinances.
They want to maintain the power.
What they've said...
So, any ordinance at all, they've struck down?
What the Superior Court has, what the Superior Court has said is, the state legislature regulates tobacco. You, the town, cannot regulate the sale of tobacco.
So, going forward for this next fiscal year, so that means we cannot, we cannot charge for this now, is that correct?
Well, we have not been told we can't.
Okay.
If we go forward and some merchant brings us to Superior Court, then, you know, unless we catch a, you know, each judge may decide, some judge may say, hey, I think the other judges were wrong. I'm not going to, I wouldn't put my money on that, but, so what the, and also, the case up to the Supreme Court will take time. I think the wise move would be for the legislature to take the bull by the horns and say, go ahead and do it. But all we can do is ask them to join in. I just don't know, I didn't want to take, spend the time calling each of the other solicitors.
This has nothing to do with tobacco. It's all about power.
Something what?
Has nothing to do with tobacco. It's more about the power that they want to control versus they don't want us to have the say.
What it's saying is this, for example, your liquor laws, the state has them, we have to follow them. We can't say that, you know, change a liquor law. What the Superior Court has said is, that's basically the same with the sale of tobacco, that what the legislature has said governs the state, the sale of tobacco through the entire state. So, you, the Town of West Warwick, you, the city of Central Falls, you can't say, this is the way the tobacco sales are going to be regulated.
So, again, when Al sent that to me, I sent it over and Kimberly Maine is here along with Zoe Moreau.
Gamble Bellinoy.
Say that again?
Gamble Bellinoy.
Gamble Bellinoy. And they brought us to a meeting, the Town Council, and also Senator Satchel, former Rep Nunes was there a couple of years ago, and they had a dinner, which they're having another dinner this Monday, in which they invited the entire Town Council to. They worked very hard in coming to all these meetings, having their presentations, showing us what tobacco smells like as far as candy, it's confusing to some kids, and basically, the state has taken over and discredited almost everything they've done over the past few years. So, when I sent this over to Kimberly to read, she said absolutely, and that's why they're here tonight also, so if anybody wants to come to the table.
Correct me if I'm wrong, didn't the state help fund paying those kids? Was I wrong in that assumption?
If I might, David, just to give the council a little bit of what this resolution says, I think the first paragraph of it is unbelievable. According to the Campaign for Tobacco-Free Kids, the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Center for Disease Control, the following is true and portrays a major public crisis. One, each day, more than 350 kids under the age of 18 become regular daily smokers and almost one-third will eventually die from smoking. Two, if the current trends continue, 5.6 million of today's youth will die prematurely from a smoking-related illness. Three, tobacco use remains a leading cause of preventable death in the United States, killing more than 480,000 people per year. Four, smoking kills more Americans than alcohol, AIDS, car accidents, illegal drugs, murder, and suicide combined. Five, smoking impacts nearly every organ of the body. More than 87% of lung cancer deaths, 61% of pulmonary disease deaths, 32% of deaths from coronary heart disease are attributable to smoking or exposure to secondhand smoking. Six, millions of Americans suffer from the debilitating medical conditions throughout their lives due to smoking. More than 16 million Americans are living with disease caused by smoking. That's, that comes from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the Center for Disease Control. Those are not statistics that the kids made up, that I made up. And what bothers me the most is I thought that when this council enacted the ordinance, I personally thought that it was one of the fairest ordinances that could be done in this area. Made me a little prejudiced because I worked on the draft of it, but I don't, you know, it bothers me that everywhere we look, people are complaining about it, smoking, secondhand smoking, and, you know, the legislature saw a fit to say, you can't smoke in a restaurant, you can't smoke in a bar. Now, they're saying, you can't smoke on the beach. Well, if smoking is that bad, why are you stopping towns from doing it? Especially with kids.
Any comment from the council?
I just had a comment. We did put a tremendous amount of work into this. We did go to a number of the meetings. My question is, and I assume that the state's going for some form of uniformity similar to what they do with alcohol, what are other states doing? Are they allowing the municipalities to make their own decisions or are they?
Well, Mass just turned to 21. Right over the border.
I don't know.
Kim can probably answer that.
Kimberly Maine, 41, youngs. A lot of states do have municipalities who do it. Massachusetts has a lot who have done it, but then now their whole state has done it. And we have been lobbying the state for years now to go to 21, and it's not being heard. We talked about the smoke-free workplaces, and that took years and years and years that I was involved in to even do that because it takes so long, yet, you know, they take away the power of the towns to be able to protect their youth. So, I think, you know, we came to the town because the state doesn't listen, the state's not listening to what we're asking.
On the smoke-free places, I can remember when they put it in effect in restaurants in East Greenwich. I mean, that was initially done locally, and I don't know, I've never followed it through. It's probably state now, but when that began, that was done on a local level.
Yeah, I heard something on the radio that the first restaurant was in 1994 that quit smoke.
I can remember that when I was legal counsel...
It was a food chain.
When I was legal counsel in East Greenwich, that I would go to Pal's Restaurant before the meeting to have dinner, and the owner there was moaning and groaning, I'll be out of business, I'll be out of business. And then when they did it, they initially, they said, okay, you can't smoke in the restaurant, but you can smoke in the bar. And then they realized that was foolishness, and they said, you can't smoke in the restaurant. And then it just began to spread. So, you know, I just, it's, to me, it's...
Zoe, it's wonderful to get us some statistics while I was up here talking. 430 localities, including New York City, Chicago, 430 localities, including New York, Chicago, San Antonio, Boston, Cleveland, Minneapolis, Kansas Cities, and Washington DC. So, 430 localities have done it, along with other states. So, localities are doing.
Thank you. Any other comment? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Thank you, Sad.
Article four licenses and permits to discuss who is responsible for back taxes, sponsored by Council President Goslin.
Make a motion to move it off the table.
Second motion.
Move a second off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now, you have a motion to move.
Make a motion to move...
Wait a minute. Which one are we going with?
We're doing K.
Yeah, J.
I'm sorry.
This isn't on the table.
I skipped it. No, we're on J. We're on J.
Well, we're doing J first?
All right, yes, we're doing J first.
Okay.
So, just move the motion.
Somebody move it.
I'll move the motion to take for discussion.
Second.
Move to discussion. Again, this came up over the last month. We've had a few businesses, I know Councilman D'Amico has contacted me, I've had a building owner contact me, we had a business person here last week who contacted me here, who was in Rose's office. One of the things that happened, and I'll use Friendly Guys Pizza as an example, as we did last meeting, Friendly Guys up left, took off, whatever it may be, new Mexican restaurant is moving in, they're not using any of that equipment, they're not. That Mexican restaurant is not using any of that equipment. So, the tangible taxes is the discussion, and the ordinance doesn't say who's actually in charge of paying those taxes. So, to me, if a new business owner is coming in, unless it's a same-style business and they're taking over that equipment, I just don't think they should be responsible for that equipment that's either no longer there or not going to be there, that who should be responsible for that and why? Now, property taxes is one thing, that's usually the landowner or the property owner of the businesses, but tangible is strictly the businesses. And I just can't see or fathom that one business comes in, another style, a totally different business comes in, and all of a sudden, we want that business to pay the tangible taxes before we issue a license. That makes absolutely no sense. Now, if it was, to me, if it was Brookside Liquors and it went from Brookside Liquors to Downtown Liquors, and everything's staying there, and that's part of their land deal and everything, then they're probably responsible for the taxes. I just can't see a renter who's renting come in, take off, and then a new guy comes in as a new business and cutting him out and saying, you've got to pay the last guy's taxes.
Should a property owner they'll look into before they rent out to the next business? Should they be responsible for looking to make sure that the previous tenant doesn't know tangible taxes?
Well, that's the question.
So, that was the question last week. So that was the question last week with the triple net lease, and I'd love for the solicitor to re-explain that. So in other words, you have a property owner and a leaseee, they make an agreement, someone has to be responsible, responsible in paying those tangibles. The question is, you know, how do we, if it's not in the ordinance, we need to go back and we need to rework the ordinance to specifically state that the property owner will be held responsible. To my understanding, it's not clear language at this point. And so, you know, I agree with the president, it doesn't seem to make sense that we're holding the owner responsible. I don't know if you want to elaborate on that or explain that, Solicitor?
No, just like I explained last week, enabling legislation would satisfy, I think, a lot of municipalities' problems with this through Title 44, because if you look at the balancing interests of the parties involved, you have the town that wants to collect tangible taxes, you have the real estate owner of where the tangible taxes is, or the situs, you have the tenant that presumably owns or and/or controls the tangible property, and then we have the issue of a lessor and lessy situation about, you know, if you're just leasing the property, an owner of the real estate has no right to go into that establishment, remove the property, either sell it or put it out to trash because he has no authority or control or dominion over it. So as I've suggested in the past, and I think a lot of support would come from all the municipalities, you would have to say in Title 44-4 regarding taxation, that you want a clear avenue as to who is going to be responsible for these taxes, at the same time realizing that the tax collector's office or the tax assessor's office is going to have to provide information not only to the owner of the real estate, but also to the tenant. And you're also opening up Pandora's Box when it comes to government's involvement with private business, because I don't think a lot of landlords are going to want to share any commercial leases they have with the town to find, to establish who's responsible for a tax, because as I told Councilman D'Amico early on, if you have a triple net lease, what you pay on a monthly basis to the landlord theoretically is supposed to go towards your taxes. Now, is that just real estate taxes? Is it tangible taxes? Is it utilities? You don't know. So again, I think the best way to handle this would be, you know, the past Attorney DiFiore put together the municipal lien certificate, wherein on a purchase, the tax, tangible tax shows up. But when you're not having a purchase of property, there's no way for anybody to know what the tangible tax is. So as a hypothetical, the owner has to exercise diligence over his own property. He's got to know that when he brings a tenant in there, especially someone that's conducting a service or providing something with machinery, that there's a tangible tax involved. On the same token, so does the tenant. Now, tenant does business, the tangible taxes aren't paid. Theoretically, if they're still there, he's not, they're not going to get their license to reopen for the next particular year until those tangible taxes are paid. This always becomes a problem when the tenant leaves, leaves the property behind, who's going to be responsible for the tangible taxes? Again, in the past, with problems with corporations that have gone bankrupt, you're not going to get the tangible taxes out of a bankrupt corporation.
But again...
Real estate taxes, yes, tangible taxes, no. Unless, of course, there's enough assets, which normally there never are.
But again, for instance, Friendly Guys, we don't know if they received their taxes, we don't know if they have intentions on paying their taxes, we don't know where they went. So now, the new business is coming in, and now we're holding them accountable. Now, what happens is if that new business comes in, pays the tangibles, and all of a sudden Friendly Guys comes in and wants to pay, or sends a check in, I guarantee there's probably, something's going to happen there where...
Well, if that scenario happened, the check would be returned to the new tenant. But since it's not going to happen, because it's never happened, the obvious argument is who is the shareholder or the stakeholder in this? It's the person that owns the property. And that person just can't turn a blind eye and collect his check every month on his rent because he has to know what's going on in his property.
So let me ask you a question. If the previous tenant leaves stuff behind, is the town able to use that, if that property was sold?
There's a process which the tax collector can take it and sell it at auction, but there's a huge expense and a lot of time involved.
For a small business, I understand.
I don't think the town of West Fork wants to get involved in selling tangible property at auction.
I understand, I just want to know.
But I don't think we should be rejecting businesses because other businesses left.
I agree.
I don't think that that business, the new business, should be penalized for coming into the community.
Once again, that's why enabling...
I just don't see that.
Enabling legislation through the General Assembly, all the municipalities will love this because it's going to be a quicker, easier route to collecting the tangible tax. But again, if you look at it, who is the common denominator? It's the owner of the real estate, it's not the tenant.
Timmy, I'm a landlord, okay? My tenant moves in, now tangible taxes, printer, chair, mop bucket, whatever it may be, I'm not going to know what they got taxed on.
But David, if you have a lease...
And then they up and take off on me.
If you have a commercial lease that says the tenant is responsible for this, and it's paid through...
Hold on, let me finish. I understand what you're saying, but we as a town council should not be enacting and punishing the new business coming in of whatever happened between the landlord and the tenant, or whatever may happen. I mean, Friendly Guys up and took off. Now, again, I don't know if they up and took off and left everything behind, left one piece behind, left everything, I really don't know. But again, I walk into a situation where a new business is coming into town, and we're asking them to pay the Friendly Guys tangibles. That is ludicrous. Now, if it was property taxes, I totally agree, that's the landlord's responsibility. But the tangible side of it, I'm not sure who's responsible.
Well, that's why you need enabling legislation, because if you don't get enabling legislation and you rely on the process which is happening right now, that the new guy gets hit with the bill, all right? If you don't think that's fair, you can have the tax collector make a recommendation to this council to waive those back tangible taxes. Once you do it for one, you're going to do it for all. I don't know how many...
Timmy, I'm not saying waive the taxes, I'm saying go after Friendly Guys, not, you've got, we have a collection process in place. In other words, we send them a bill, if they don't pay it, it goes to Rossi Law Office. Rossi Law Office gets a percentage to try to collect that. Now, that should be their responsibility. Why should it be the town councils, and why should it be the new business coming in?
Because if it's not collected by the tax attorneys, it stays on the books, and your tax collector on a monthly basis has the tax that's owed plus interest and penalties accruing. So again, if there's a certain line item that states these are potential tangible taxes that need to be collected from businesses that are no longer in business, and we don't know where they are, and it's probably not going to be collected, are you going to get rid of that tax at the end of the year, or that dollar amount on your, on your projected revenues?
There should be a timetable. I'll be honest, corrective accounting should be a timetable. If you're not going to be able to collect it, and it's four years later, we shouldn't be sitting here and assuming, because that's what got us in trouble.
Wait a minute.
Oh, wait a minute, that's what got us in trouble because our previous finance director put on there as four, five, six, seven, eight years of taxes that weren't collected, and he was expecting to collect them. If you haven't collected them in eight years, you're not going to collect them.
I'm not disagreeing with that. However, what I'm trying to say, if the tax collector has a job to do and it's not being done, needs to be addressed at that level. However, if in fact, a new business coming into town is told that your tangible taxes are due within six months, nine months, 12 months, and they're not paid, then they get shut down. But again, the, the language of Title 44-4 right now is so archaic, it allows you to go after someone who may be a representative, which may in fact be the owner of the property, but it's not clear. And a lot of people have trouble with that statute, trying to understand it about who exactly is responsible. But again, if, if the tax collector's department is allowing this to go on year after year after year and not collecting the tax, well, shame on the town. You know, nothing, I mean, there's no way eight years should go by before somebody has to pay a tangible tax that's been there for eight years. But all I'm suggesting is that, and again, I think you get a lot of support, is that if there was enabling legislation, all the municipalities would benefit from it. And it also would make landlords, commercial landlords, much more diligent when they put their leases together.
So do we need to ask, so do you put that letter forward to...
I think Alan and I can put it together, I think we worked on it probably five or six years ago. Send it off to the delegation and see what they think, and see what could happen this year. But at the meantime, I mean, we already went to federal court at one time when it was a transfer of property from owner A to owner B, federal court said tangible taxes do not run with the property, you cannot collect it off the new owner. So that's already been decided.
So if there are items, like I know, we've said the items are gone, if the items are left behind, you can't get a hold of Friendly Guys, and the property owner is there, and someone new comes in, we still have these items there?
Theoretically, if they're a fixture, they belong to the real estate, and the owner of the property is going to benefit from it, so he would have to pay the tangible tax. If they're not a fixture, if they're something that's just plugged in, the question now is who owns the property, who has authority over it, who has control, and who has dominion? If the owner takes it upon himself to sell that property, he just took the town's opportunity to get paid for that, because there is, like I said, there is a process.
Right.
So let's just say on an annual basis, there's 20 particular tax, tangible tax accounts that could go to auction.
But Tim, let me ask you this.
Does the town want to get in that business?
Friendly Guys left, all right, and I'm just using that as an example. Friendly Guys leaves, he left his pizza ovens behind. Now, you're telling me the landlord has to wait for the town to decide to auction that off?
No, 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 no. Under the statute, all right, if in fact, it's not a fixture, the landlord is supposed to store it at the expense of the tenant, all right, because it's not his, he has no authority over it.
The expense of what tenant? The tenant that just left?
The tenant that just left, right. Now, you know the commercial tenant probably hasn't paid its rent, all right, so it's not, it's not going to pay its storage fees.
Correct.
So usually what they do is cover a darkness, put it out for the trash, put it out for scrap, or they sell it. Now, if it's a fixture, those pizza ovens were fixtures, they were connected. You just can't go in there and saw them off and then throw them out into the, into the parking lot and say, "Oh, I don't know what happened to them." Because there is a process for which the town to auction the property, is it long, is it onerous? Absolutely. It's worse than our real estate tax sales.
So if you, so what do you do? You have to leave them in there, and then somebody wants to come and rent it and doesn't want to be a pizza place, doesn't want them there, and they can't rent it?
I know the problems of being a commercial landlord.
So you can't, so you can't rent the pizza place?
That's, that's why enabling legislation would allow this town to address situations just like that. Landlords can come in and either debate whether they like it or they don't, commercial tenants could debate whether they like it or not, because this happens in every community. Rose, are you here?
I am.
Rose, what do we, what is owed right now on debt accounts for tangible taxes?
Just come on to the mic, please.
If I may ask.
What is owed for...
On debt accounts. Come on up to the mic.
I don't, I don't have that.
But it's a lot of money, isn't it?
Yes.
So, I mean, you're, you have an opportunity right now, you can waive it and forget about collecting it.
Timmy, no, I don't think any, I'm not saying waive and don't try to collect it, we should be attacking Friendly Guys Pizza or businesses that are leaving. Like, for instance, the Route 3 Auto Sales that you brought up to me, that Route 3 Auto Sales is in Exeter. That Route 3 Auto Sales moved from here to Exeter. So we should be chasing him up in Exeter and getting, and going after him, not the next Route 3 Auto Sales that wants to come in.
I don't think anyone disagrees with you, they absolutely should go after him.
So it sounds like we could actually have this discussion all night. And it seems as though there's some, there's no clarity as to how we should act. I think we all agree, I shouldn't say that, I agree that we should not hold up a new tenant from coming in that does not do the town any good. But clearly, we need to move forward and get some direction, and if enabling legislation, and Al, you've, you've worked on some of that?
Five, five years ago, Tim and I worked on some, some changes that I, they never went anywhere, though.
We'll try and get some clarity.
So we, we clearly need some direction and clarity.
That's the only reason I'm standing, that I'm fully in agreement with what Tim is saying, that the problem starts up there and leaves a mess down here. We've seen it in the zoning board, a little different from the, what you're stating, David, where got a commercial piece of property, I'm renting, tenant's gone. All of a sudden, there's, there's commercial, these fixtures are there, I got to pay the taxes on them.
Again, Al, if it was like-for-like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't...
No, I understand.
So it was like a barber shop, we had over here a barber shop. Barber shop sold, new barber shop went in, the same exact equipment's there. In my opinion, that should have been resolved at the closing, plain and simple.
The point I'm making is that, as it stands now, the tenant moves out and no new tenant moves in. We're going after the property owner.
But in that situation, did the barber shop, was the business sold to the other?
I, I can't say if it was or wasn't. Alls I know is a barber shop went in, a barber shop went out, a barber shop went in, they have all the same equipment, I don't know if there was a closing, that should be resolved between them. But a tenant up and leaves, takes off, doesn't even say they're closing, just shuts the doors, and, I mean, and then a new restaurant comes in who's not even using any of that equipment, says, "Hey, we're coming in, we're putting in a Mexican-style restaurant," and you know, we're responsible for pizza.
What if it's not a restaurant? What if they moved in and they opened up like a salon? I'm just saying, something totally different, exactly.
If they're not losing that equipment, they should not be held accountable for that.
To pick up on what Mary Beth said, this is a discussion, you gentlemen, you have all night long, without what Kim is suggesting.
Anna, come up to the microphone, please, and state your name and address for the record. Anna Spodnik, Carpenter Court. A commercial lease is specific, when you move in, the fixtures attached to that building when you move in are considered fixtures, not what the person installs and then takes off out of town and leaves behind. Those are not considered fixtures for the owner of the property. The fixtures are the lights that are attached, the walls that are attached, whatever was attached when that person came in and says, "I want to rent this property and turn it into a pizza place." Then they put the pizza ovens in, they may be bolted to the floor, but they weren't there when that person rented it. And as far as I know, from my experience with commercial leases, tangible taxes are the equipment used for the purpose of a business in progress. Not because, okay, all of a sudden, the property is left behind. When does the landlord get his right to reclaim his property? Why should he be victimized a second time? Chances are, if the, the group left the town, they left the landlord behind, they left the taxes behind. I mean, what you're setting up is small businesses will come into this town, not pay their property, I mean, not pay their tangible taxes, and leave it on the landlords. Who's going to want to rent here? People that don't pay their bills. You can't leave this, I mean, property taxes, most commercial leases specify property taxes are either the landlord's problem, or they're the tenant's problem, but it's by lease, it's not by the town. The town can't come in here and, and alter a lease, that's, that's crazy. If you're saying that the next person coming in is going to pay somebody else's tangible taxes, that's just off the wall, that's killing small business.
And I don't think anybody believes that that should happen, I, I agree with that. Again, I think we could discuss this all night, I think we just, we need to come to a resolution and figure out how we move forward, including how long we keep something on the tax rolls before we, we take it off. And if enabling legislation is the recommendation, then I would suggest someone, someone put that together so we can move forward.
I, I would suggest that I'll work with Rose, because Rose still needs direction, because she sees this on a daily basis, and she doesn't, she, I mean, she's trying to do her job, her job is to collect taxes. And she wants to collect as much as she can, so it helps our reports and everything else, and at the end of the year, we're looking pretty good. But again, I, I just ran into this situation, I bumped into two clients, two people that were looking to move here into West Fork, and the landlord, and I totally agree with their situation, is when, totally, I don't, I just don't believe that a Spanish restaurant who has nothing to do with pizza, is not going to be using any of that equipment, should be held accountable for that.
They shouldn't be.
I agree with that, but can, can, do you think it could be specified, though, the same type of business? I mean, it has to be, it has to be more black and white, I think.
Mr. Hall, if you want to just come up, you can. Again, if, if there is a, in my opinion, if, if somebody sold the business, like Friendly Guys sold the business to West Cart House, and West Cart moved in, in their closing, all that is going to be in writing, tangibles, everything's going to be paid up to date at the closing. That should be resolved when transactions take place. When a tenant up and leaves, I just don't think that that should happen that way. I mean, just my opinion. Mr. Hall?
Richard G. Hall, 53, Providence, treat my business, is that? I agree with what you're saying, but I also agree that if it was another pizza business, this should have been resolved and the tax taken and figured into the sale of the merchandise. But in the situation where I have with a guy just up and left, can't get a hold of him, and I even worked with her trying to resolve it, trying to get letters, they just don't correspond, now I'm left now with a bunch of junk in there that I got to pay to fix the roof, the water pipes, because they didn't pay the electric, and no matter what, I'm still out $5,800 plus $8,000 for the rent. And I agree with what you say, but what happens if they're month-to-month, there's no lease?
That happens a lot, there's a lot of... That happens a lot, there's a lot of.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be the responsibility of the landlord.
I understand it, but I want, I want, I want the council to listen to this. And this, you guys will find this, I think, intriguing. This is Rhode Island General Law, 44410. Cite us in ownership of taxable property, persons to whom tangible personal, personally taxed. If any tangible personal property described in this section located in any town or city shall belong to any person, partnership, corporation, joint stock company, or association unknown to the assessors, it shall be taxed to the owner. A person unknown to the assessors, and the collector may restrain and sell the property in the same manner as provided in Chapters 8 and 9 of this title. The next section. Provided that if any tangible personal property described in this section located in any town or city belonging to any person, co-partnership, corporation, joint stock company, or association unknown to the assessors is in possession or custody of any agent, cosignee, or other person or persons acting in a contractual representative capacity for the owner unknown to the assessors, it shall be taxed to the agent, cosignee, or other representative, and agent, cosignee, or other representative is personally liable for the tax assessed against him or her on the property in his or her possession or custody, owned as described in this section, and shall have a lien on the property of the person unknown to the assessors for the tax paid on the unknown person's property. Now, does anybody want to try to define and clarify that?
I'd like to make a point, though, while not.
Now, that, that right there says, alright, the owner, not designating the owner of the property, alright? But it's also designating a representative, a legal representative, which if you have a lease and/or contract that discusses this property.
Yeah, but the way that's interpreted may be the way you interpret it.
Oh, no, no, sir, sir, I don't want to interpret that. This is, Mr. DeFiori and I have had discussions about why this is not clear.
That'd be all right, if I had somebody in there that had a whole bunch of equipment, I agreed to rent it, the space to them, no business name. But somehow or another, they're getting away from paying the tax to the town. Now, your, your tax assessor comes in, goes in my building and sees all this equipment in there that I'm like storing. Somebody's responsible. And if this guy don't want to pay, naturally, they're going to come after me, the landlord. But that's not, he don't have a business. We've got people that have businesses in there.
If he doesn't have a business, how are you leasing to him with all his property in there? If he doesn't have a business?
He doesn't, I got room to store equipment. If I wanted, somebody come in and wanted to store a whole bunch of equipment, let's say.
So it's storage, right?
Yeah. It's the same thing, that's just what that would be. There's no name, no business name, no name. The guy is storing, he pays me a monthly fee.
So you're leasing to a company that has no name?
Yeah. Guy comes in, he wants to rent space, by the month? It'd be just like me, in case I had a garage and somebody parked the car in there, two cars, and they said, Mr. Hall, I want to store my cars in your garage. Okay. They're in West Warwick, tax rule.
You don't get any information on the person that owns the car?
As long as I collect my rent.
There, there you go.
Right. So why am I going to be responsible? You're asking me to take over a job that the town should be doing. Another thing, if you're going to hold the landlord in responsibility for the tax, and you're going to do this, and then he's got to go and check with the town and see, you're going to have to have somebody in the town sending a letter out every time to the landlord.
As a landlord, if my tenant was to give me a notice that they're moving out, I would do my due diligence and contact Rose and say, hey, do they owe anything?
Right.
And then, you can get that off a damaged deposit or whatever. But when they up and leave, and just take off.
And nobody knows where they are.
And nobody knows where they are, it's, it's hard for me to sit there and hold a new business accountable for that $1,200, or whatever it is, I think it was $1,200.
Plus, he's not even going to use any of the equipment, nothing, nothing.
No, I agree. Alright, just one more comment, and then we can move on.
Sean Wall, Route 3 Auto.
Old Route 3 or new Route 3?
Well, trying to get a new Route 3.
Sean, just give your home address.
For Little John Lane. I'm just trying to figure out some type of timetable here, basically, because I have been trying to rent the building, obviously, for a while now. And I have a possible tenant. And they went to the town to find out what they had to do to get a license. We've come to find out there's a tangible tax that hasn't been paid. Okay? The tenant that was there left without paying four months' rent. Didn't tell me he was leaving, just up and left. So, nine times out of 10, I think that's going to be the way it is.
And he's in Exeter.
And he's in Exeter. And I have no way to get anything out of him. It's, it's basically, I'm at a loss. So, for me to have to ask the new tenant to pay the $1,700 tax is, we didn't even, never even knew about it until he told me.
But your property taxes occurring?
Of course.
But the tangibles from the previous business?
Right, which were cars, which were cars, and just some other stuff that happened to be in the building. So the cars are obviously gone. I have no way to collect any of that tax. For you, because, I mean, apparently, we're turning into tax collectors instead of landlords, which is kind of.
My only fear, my only fear is setting a precedent, but I think it's awful to just leave empty businesses and have people go, well, I'm not going to come here, and then we're not going to get any money out of it. That's the way, I mean, we're going to leave these empty businesses if we do this? But I'm also concerned about setting a precedent.
And these new businesses provide jobs.
And pay taxes.
And pay, then, I mean, you hope they're going to pay tangible taxes?
As the restaurant owner came up here last week, he said, I have no problem paying my taxes.
Yeah.
Um, when he comes here, or if he ever decides to leave. But he doesn't feel, and I totally agree with him, he shouldn't pay the previous guy's taxes. Unless the business, unless he bought Friendly Guy's Pizza. That is the only way.
Right, exactly, of course. Yeah, and that's what happened next door, at the fish market. The property was, the business was sold to a new guy, and he ended up paying the tangible tax, and the equipment that was in the building.
It's all in the closing, yeah.
It was all, it was all set.
But now to put you on the spot, did you ever written a lease with your tenant?
Yes.
Alright, and have you tried to collect the back rent?
I've tried everything.
Have you gone to court?
No, not yet.
Okay. So if you went to court, it was successful?
I'm sorry, but.
I'm just asking a question. If you went to court and you were successful, there's an issue with back taxes that the court could address, correct?
It could, but we're already talking about tens of thousands of dollars. We're already in the hole.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just trying to say.
I'm just trying to put it in perspective a little bit for a landlord.
Right.
Where, we're already in the hole, we're basically just going to wash our hands of it, because it's not worth going to court.
I understand.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
So, we're already in the hole, and we're trying to get out of the hole with the property.
But you have a, you have a dollar amount that's owed to the town of West Warwick that could possibly be resolved in a legal matter in court regarding a landlord tenant on commercial property. And commercial property, landlord tenant actions move much more quickly than residential. So I know you don't want to waste any more money or time, but at the same time, that's where you have that, whatever dollar amount's owed to the town, hanging in the balance.
Well, I just think it's irresponsible to ask landlords to get into their tenant's books. I really don't, that's a slippery slope.
That's why I started off, the fact that government's involvement with private business. I'm sure you don't want the town of West Warwick going through all your leases and all your books, do you?
No.
Not that there's anything wrong.
No, but it's, it's very frustrating, and, you know, it's been over a year.
And, and again, we can go on all night, I just, so we can move on, and we can discuss this further, but again, I think Rose needs to take this as a case-by-case basis. We can't stop new businesses from coming in because of old businesses leave. So I, I think we need to give Rose some sort of direction later on. We could discuss this at a later date, on what to do. Because if she's not, if we're stopping businesses, I mean, like you said, he's been almost trying to rent this for months now, and he can't even rent it because of, somebody's responsible for the back taxes on tangibles. Again, I totally agree, if it's property, that's the, that's the property one. If it's tangible, that's the business. One last comment.
Genus Pashino, 25, Ninth Street. I have to agree with you, David. The problem lies with, did they file an annual return and declare all the equipment for the business? That's required by law every year by January 31st. And if they left, they have to file an affidavit saying, you know, where the equipment went, and did they dispose of it? And as an assessor, a former assessor, I would call and try to find out where that owner is, because it's not the responsibility of the new owner coming in, because he's not taking over the business. He's not taking over the equipment. Now, if the owner of the property took the ownership of the equipment and is storing it, he needs to declare it. He's responsible. And if that's what I heard him say, then the responsibility is his. He just can't keep the equipment in a, in a storage area. He becomes the owner of.
No, he said he was leasing to somebody else that actually stores their stuff in his building. He has a part of the building that's empty, that he leases out to people who need storage. So he also, that's what he was saying.
And he has to declare that to the assessor, the names of the people, where the assessor has to file, send them a return, and they have to declare their.
So theoretically, if a business leaves behind this equipment?
If they leave behind the equipment. But it's not, if this new owner is not going to be putting in a pizza shop, the assessor needs to get an affidavit out and find out, have them sign it, where is the equipment? Do they own, do they still have it in possession? And that they will pay the taxes until they file that affidavit. And anything from, because tangible taxes go from January 1st to December 31st of the previous year, not the current calendar year. Real estate, it goes from the current calendar year, so that's where.
And obviously, there's two different situations. One, we're talking about Friendly Guy who left pizza equipment. I'm sure the guy at Route 3 Auto Sales didn't leave his cars behind, so. I'm saying there's a difference there, if somebody takes their stuff, and you know that it's, there's obviously, there's evidence that it's gone. I don't know if there's a difference.
But you're still going to have the annual return, and you still definitely have to have the affidavit. The assessor needs to have that affidavit signed by that previous owner. What did he do with the equipment?
If they up and took off, and Rose has been trying to contact them, and they can't seem to find them, so. Again, that's a whole nother story.
Yeah.
If they don't fill out the paperwork, that's the, I mean, you have to go.
You know, you have to catch those things when they come for the licenses through the clerk's office.
We do.
If it fell, if they left before then, you can't make this guy to pay those taxes.
So when licenses come before the town council, it's contingent to police fire and tax collection.
And it should be the assessor should be involved in that, because that's the way I was in East Greenwich. It had to go through the assessors, you had to look at the businesses, and you had to make sure you had all the affidavits, or you had all the annual returns filed.
Thank you.
And, and the flow went very good. But I mean, you know, you're not going to get them all, this one here took off. You can't force the new owner, who is not taking over the equipment. And as for any leased hold, which the other one was talking about, if it's attached to the building, and you have to look at the lease, is the leased hold going, is this going to be for use of the operation of the business, and you're going to be responsible of it? Or is the owner of the building going to be responsible for the lease hold? So those are very important things you have to look for in the leases, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, move on to the next item.
Business license for La Casa City of Warwick LLC located at 53 Providence Street, previously tabled, resolved at the town council, hereby approves the business license for La Casa City of Warwick LLC located at 853 Providence Street.
There's one ahead of us before. Make a motion to move this item off the table.
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I need a motion to move.
Make a, make a motion to move business license for La Casa City of Warwick LLC.
Second.
Moving second, discussion. Again, this is what came before us last week. Again, I'm just going to say it real quick, I don't think we should punish a new business for an old business. That's all I'm saying. Any other comment?
No.
Any public comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Welcome to West Warwick, and good luck with your business.
Thank you.
Aye, thank you, welcome.
Update regarding business license, Family Med Plus located at 325 Quaker Lane, previously tabled.
Make a motion to move it off the table?
Second.
Moving second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And I need a motion to.
Make a motion for the update regarding the business license to Family Med Plus?
Second.
Moving second, Tim?
Nothing has changed as far as the bankruptcy, but I did have a conversation with Rose, who did inform me that the tangible taxes, is she still here?
She just went out.
Are getting paid. So, again, we had, I had suggested either a 30, 16, or 90-day period of time. So I would just kick it over 30 more days to make sure they make the payments, and.
Alright, so we won't take any action on this?
No, just, I think that the business license was conditioned upon the taxes being paid, and they are.
So, so we can, and then?
Yes.
Yes.
So, Rose, I know, before you sit down, want to come up? Solicitor Williamson just gave us an update on Family Med. He said the taxes are paid?
Getting paid.
Or getting paid?
I thought you informed me that the property, the bigger machines that were being, taxes were being paid last week.
Oh, the, the leasing company?
Yes.
Yeah.
Paying the taxes.
Yes, the leasing company is.
So the leasing company is paying the taxes on them?
I had a conversation with Tony this morning in regards to the, he, I guess he had spoken with someone at university, and stating that they purchased that property, the tangible now, the x-rays, and they were supposed to be getting the list together of who uses what on each, on each side. He did say Sal was going to be here tonight, so.
Well, again, I would just make the license conditioned upon the payment of the taxes. If the leasing company was making payments, we'll just keep on top of that until Tony and Sal can make a report.
Right, because they're saying that they did get sold. They sold them to university of orthopedics.
So if we could put it on for the first meeting in April, just to check.
Okay.
Because Sal and, Sal and Tony were going to present a report.
They were.
As related to that, and it hasn't been completed yet.
Right.
Alright, so, we'll take no action on that, and M is the same situation, so we're going to take no action on that?
Yes.
Alright, so L and M, skip that, we're on consent agenda.
Consent agenda license application, resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed of or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Consent agenda correspondence, resolved that the consent agenda, having been posted, all matters being referred to proper departments and being disposed or awaiting recommendation, the same is hereby approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion? Any public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Litigation, tax assessment cases previously tabled, sponsored by Town Solicitor Williamson. Do you want me to do this?
We've got to make a motion to move it off the table.
Yeah.
Make a motion to move it off the table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. And I need a motion to move litigation.
Make a motion to move litigation?
Second.
Solicitor Williamson?
If I may, these matters came before the Superior Court with Justice Richard Leach presiding, approximately a month ago. And he made the request that they be sent to mediation for resolution. And his rule is that the client themselves have to approve this. That's why he put it before the council tonight. I will tell you that since last week, both the QVM and Astromed cases, four in total, I will tell you that since last week, both the QVM and Astromed cases, four in total, they have been dismissed outright. So the only three that I'm requesting approval and authority to mediate would be New England Institute of Technology versus West Warwick, which is KC 2014-0712, KC 2015-0116, KC 2016-0244, KC 2017-0162, Royal Mill, JG Royal Mill versus KUTU, KC 2017-1084, and Moriarty versus West Warwick, KC 2014-0267. And I will be working with Sal to determine whether or not, if there's any offers of settlement, we will report back to the council. But this just allows for mediation, which is non-binding, which basically the court is going to basically pre-try the case and hopefully resolve it without trying it.
Any comments or questions to Solicitor? Thank you.
You gotta vote?
Um, all in favor?
One question. On just, on each one, it's, I'll just take number five, for example. Moriarty versus West Warwick, KC 2014. 2014, is that the year?
2014. What they normally do, once there's a reevaluation, some of the bigger commercial outfits will file it annually for that three-year period of time before the next revale. Mr. Moriarty's a real estate matter, dealing with the size of his property and a condominium. By, he's got an argument versus square footage and how it's measured, either from the outside or from the inside. So it's kind of a simple case. It's not a lot of money, but I mean, some of these cases kick around for a while because plaintiffs' counsel don't move them.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
SCI Aaron's versus West Warwick, KC 13-1098, KC 2014-0715, KC 2016-0196, KC 2017-0197, settlement offered prospective tax credit in the amount of $14,878.74, previously tabled, sponsored by town solicitor Timothy Williamson.
Would you take it off the table?
Second.
Move the resolution.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Now I need to move the resolution.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Discussion?
This is a matter where the attorneys for Aaron settles a confidential settlement proposal back on January 22nd. I had a discussion with Sal and a phone call with attorney Cotter. And on February 6th, Sal gave me a preliminary approval. I indicated to him that the council would have to approve it. This is for tangible taxes for Aaron's. There's an issue about whether or not they leased, they leased the own or how in fact they do their inventory. And Aaron's had filed three separate cases, one against the town of West Warwick, one against the city of Cranston, and one against the city of Providence. Both Providence is settled, and we're looking to settle, basically under the same terms where their taxes have been paid in full for 2015, 2016, and 2017. But they're looking for a credit of $14,828.74 moving forward, based upon the cost-benefit analysis of trying these cases even to a successful outcome. It's gonna cost more than that. So Sal thought it would be best to resolve this matter with the suggested value of $14,828.74 not to exceed. So their taxes have been paid every quarter up to date. We're just gonna address this going forward.
And what is the amount of taxes?
Um, total taxes owed, I believe, were in excess of $75,000. I don't know if Rose has that there. I'm going off the top of my head. This goes back to 2014.
Yeah, this is, they, they went into litigation back in, they stopped paying their taxes and it was a 2013 bill. So they owe 13, 14, and 15 bill.
Which totals about 75,000?
Seventy-one thousand, $734.59.
So they don't get any relief until that's paid in full plus interest and penalties.
So what are you trying to do? Just settle?
There's gonna be a reduction based upon what Sal indicated in his assessment of how the tangibles are being taxed. So they don't get any relief until they're paid in full with interest and penalties.
So we will get the payment of 70,000?
If Rose gives me a number tomorrow and the check is cut...
You can have it.
Well, tomorrow. It might be different with interest.
Oh, no, this is, I printed this out today.
So whatever that dollar amount is, that has to be paid in full. They don't get any relief. But this relief is only going forward on how the town would assess its tangibles moving forward.
So are we going to change the method or just give this credit? And is it strictly to Aaron's?
I believe, I believe Sal could answer that question better than I can, but I think it's the method on which, because of the way Aaron's handles its business, we've always said that if the owner or the lessor does not, let's see, doesn't pick up the property, we are taxing it on an annual basis, much like a car. They're arguing that it's a lease to own, so as soon as they put any money down, even though they haven't picked the product up, it should be taxed as a tangible piece of property. So there's been an arrangement reached that Sal, I believe, as far as the method of taxation, is gonna address it going forward, so we don't run into this problem.
Yeah, it, back in...
They're into tangible taxes, it saves a lot of headaches.
Back in, when it was assessed in 2012, they assessed it at $31,515.90.
Right.
And that's when they had, they, they were upset about that, and they went into the litigation.
There was, there was an issue about, and it was comical, because they tried to indicate that they don't lease property in the state of Rhode Island. All of their print media, I'm sorry, print advertising, televised advertising, and radio advertising clearly indicates that they do. So they informed us that the word "lease" doesn't mean the same thing in Georgia, where they're from, as it does in Rhode Island. So we've had a little bit of an issue with that.
The language in Georgia.
Yes.
But then in the 14 and the 15 bill and the 16 bill, it like's cut in half. They went back to the 14,000s.
But everything has to be paid in full with interest and penalties prior to this taking effect. Again, this has nothing to do with any retroactive tax. It's got prospective tax.
Well, they're gone now, so...
I know, there's another ones that are gone.
Yeah, I know, I'm saying, they're gone. So you're saying going forward, but there is no going forward here, yeah.
Oh, again.
They moved out.
I know they did.
Put this to the business.
I understand, I'm just...
Any other comment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Eyes have it.
Discussion action upgrading signage and parking area at West Warwick Civic Center near playground, sponsored by Councilman Messier.
Talked to Dave Pecosi a little bit after the last meeting. Just some of the concern up near the playground is there's a few one ways up there that are really not very well marked. They're kind of painted on, they're very light, so you have some people going different directions. I just wanna make sure that before the playground opens, we get it clearly painted, we get it clearly marked, maybe some new signage up there. It's not even that we have to put any ordinance.
It's really crazy.
Yeah, just to make sure that it's clear, because if you're gonna have all those kids there, you don't wanna have cars going, there's gonna be more traffic in that area once the playground opens. So I just wanna make sure before the playground opens that we have clear signage of which way, which direction you can go, which way. But I know some people, they use the one, when you're coming out, when you're coming past the playground this way, with the playground, if I'm in the playground, it's actually going this way, but people go both ways. But I believe it is a one-way according to the very, like...
There's like light arrows on the...
So it's light arrows.
If I remember correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think the high school students in Ken Towns had worked on correcting that parking area, and so Cameron could probably reach out to Ken and see what we can do to maybe repaint it or whatever.
Just so it's, just so it's clear, so that way there's, yeah.
Again, I'm sure they'll work with us, and she's taken note of it now, so...
And I'm sure there's, there's probably people that will go up there to use the playground that, that don't frequent that area now. So I just wanna make sure that it's clear when we, avoid the problem before we get to it.
I'll be there.
All right, that's all.
Any other comment? Thank you. Next.
Signs post, posted at town ponds and water access points stated to stay off the ice. Ice is not safe, sponsored by Councilman Moriarty.
I'm gonna have, I put this on the agenda two meetings ago, and I put it on again just to see, I spoke with Ernie a couple of weeks ago, to see where this, where this stands, Ernie, as far as contacting DEM, the trust.
Well, again, after the original meeting, the trust was contacted, and they responded that it would be appropriate to put signage on town-owned waterways, so town-owned ponds, any type of water like that. So the trust, I guess, had numerous communities do the same, made the same request. So they indicated, yes, that is appropriate, signage would be appropriate. The liability issues would be, uh, they cited state law as well. But they thought it would certainly be a good idea, and with appropriate signage would be correct. So again, at that point, that was the inquiry that was done. And to go forward, if that's the council's wish, we would have to review the, I think it's called the recreational use statute in cases, see what that case law is. We would need to contact DEM and some of the communities that have done this to see what their policies are for policies, procedures, the type of signage. The trust would also want to see the type of signage that we would have. And we'd also have to do an inventory as to what are the town-owned waterways, ponds, and have documentation, you know, that we do own them. So those things could, you know, would be done if that was the direction of the council to proceed.
So the question I have, and I read that email that you sent over about the ponds and, like Jay, there's a pond behind Coesia. Who owns that pond?
Resident owns the pond.
So who...
The town doesn't own it.
No, no, so I'm asking, like, and so Patuxa River Authority, I mean, we should probably get them involved in this because they're basically in charge of the Patuxa River. And then, you know, Ward Five has a pond over there, Juniper Pond. You know, that's not the town's responsibility, so who's, you know, whose responsibility? Are they gonna put a sign up, is the question? You know, so other things I was thinking about after you brought that up.
But that's up to them, though. I mean, I, they, should they? I would say yes, but that, again, that's up to them. You know, I, I'm more concerned with what we own, what...
And again, what do we own?
And, well, that's why we have to do that inventory. And it's, I think it's good for us to know, too. But the fishing...
I think you should get Patuxa River Authority involved, too.
The fishing pier is, is a very, it's a big concern of mine, only because we provide the access there because of the canoe launch. So to me, all I'm thinking is, I mean, you look at today where it's, it's, yeah, it's frozen. But then in a couple of days, it warms up again. Half of you can walk on, half of you maybe can't. So, and I don't know, Tim, what your thoughts on, are on this, as far as, you know, I know we have to get DEM and the PRA involved and all that, but the fishing pier, we don't own the river.
Yeah, that's right.
But again, we're providing, we're providing that invitation to go on the river.
If the access to the river is through property owned by the town, and once DEM signs off on it, that's not the state, those are the properties you're thinking about. Nothing that's privately owned, nothing that's in the backyard of a private person's real estate, so...
Right.
I think what David's idea is, and Ernie is, to inventory everything that the town may have, cross-reference it against what DEM has, and then you'll have an idea.
Right.
Once you have the inventory done, design the sign, let the trust approve the sign, and then put them up. As am I.
Yeah, I know.
So they'll be ready.
Yeah, it's gonna be for next year.
I'm kidding.
No, it's true.
No, I tell you, the design, the design of the sign will take the longest.
It's a sign of a town, it's a sad state.
I'm not bringing any signage before this council. You guys can handle the design.
There's so much legality about putting up a simple sign that wants people to stay off the ice.
Thank you, Ernie.
Thank you, Ernie. Any other questions on that matter? Thank you.
Review all boards and commission members, sponsored by...
All right, so I brought this up only because of our recent situation. And I brought this up based upon, not the resignation of Jerry Lee, but if the council decided to remove Jerry Lee. And that did not happen here tonight. So the discussion that had been brought up, and after the situation that came before us, that we should look at all board members that are on boards right now and see what their situation is. Now, again, if reading Jerry's letter and reading the constitutional rights is the question. Because after Jerry's situation came up, it was brought to my attention, there could be possibly two others on the board, on boards with some sort of backgrounds. Now, I only know of one, and it's very easy to look up that background. And I also had the chief send me over, I asked him what the case was. At the time, it was a felony, but cleaning down was misdemeanors. Now, again, do we look at that, and do we have to look at that? And also, so the question I have for the council, do you wanna have somebody review all the boards and do a background check of everybody on the board?
Yeah, I mean, actually, it was my next agenda items. I mean, I think we should. Whether we can take action or not is, it will be up to debate, but I think we have the right to at least do a check. I think if it's, if it's fair for Jerry, it should be fair for everybody else in every single one of those boards. I think it should be, you know, I know that Jerry got singled out there, but I think it should be for everybody on every single one of those boards. That's my opinion.
Again, I was gonna push for this because if the council decided to remove Jerry, then again, I agree with Councilman Messier. If the, if the, if the council removed Jerry for his background, whether it's 15, 20 years ago, then it's only fair that anybody else for their background should be removed. Jerry did resign, so it's up to the council what you feel now. Do you feel that all, all members on every board should have a BCI check, current members?
What I think, what I think is...
I'm gonna get the names off the police department.
And I know, and I know we haven't, we haven't gone through the list of what we want for the criteria for all the boards. I think that that criteria should be for any current members, too. Now, whether we can remove them or not based on that, I think, but I think whatever we come up with for the criteria for board members that we appoint in the future, I think the current members should be held to that standard as well. Now, whether we're allowed to, whether we're allowed to remove them for that is up to conjecture, but I think it should be fair. For any new members should be held to the same standard as any current members.
My...
Actually, any current members, new members should be held to the same standard as any new members.
Well, that's what I was, that's what I was, yes.
The council going forward might wanna look at having an application form for each particular boarding commission, which clearly delineates anything under the statute, ordinance, or charter as to what the requirements are. For example, if in fact it is a, serves at the pleasure of, it should clearly indicate that on the application versus other boards and commissions where they don't serve at the pleasure of. You'd also, you'd also have them voluntarily check off that they will undergo a BCI check.
So...
Or attach a resume, things of that nature.
Is there, is there, can, can the boards be at the, at the pleasure of? Or is there something that says we cannot for certain boards?
No, no, it's specifically in the charter, some boards and commissions say at the, at the pleasure of, others do not.
But that's per our charter, not per state law?
Right, you can change that charter. But again, the bottom line is, the constitution is going to supersede any issue as pertains to the charter, as it relates to similar items.
So, so I agree, certainly going forward, we should do background checks, but there are questions even about that, whether it's a state background check or a national background check. I actually looked to the schools a little bit, because I know that I had to fill out BCI checks when I was volunteering or going on, being a chaperone. When you go to the general laws in the state of Rhode Island, within Title 16, it actually gives some clear guidance as to what needs to be done for an employee versus, and I guess I would ask the question, are employee, are employees subject to background checks? I don't know the answer to that.
Yes.
Yes.
New hires.
And is it a national?
NCIC chief, I think most of the time it's gonna be BCI and NCIC, because they usually run together, but the chief...
There are some parameters, and it is delineated in the state law.
Especially what the police department has access to. In the case you're talking about, there is no authority for the police department to access either the FBI or the Attorney General's database and report back that information.
No, but you have access to the BCI.
We can look at it, but we cannot release it. That burden, in my opinion, is something that you should get a waiver for, a board member, and either the town or the board and for that, prospects should go get their record. The prospective applicant should produce it, but that's what I mean, to voluntarily check off that they're gonna get a critical background check.
But again, I just wanna say something, and I wanna say it publicly, and yeah, you could put on there, have you been convicted of any crimes or whatever it may be. But it's called a record for a reason. And a record is, 'cause they keep record on it. And I can tell you now, if somebody did something 20 years ago, and that record is squeaky clean for the next 20 years and they haven't done anything, that says something. Now, Chief, you've been in the business longer. When you got a record and you pull it off, and it just looks like this, we as a council know, that's not, you know? But again, I, I believe in second chances. I believe in individuals, just 'cause, listen, we've, if anybody in this room, in this town, to say they've never done one thing wrong, you might not have got caught. Or, you know, we've all done something that we've regretted in our lives. And to hold people accountable 20, 30 years later is ludicrous. I used to say, even when we had, you know, everybody used to pick on a former councilman. That happened 35 years ago, in my opinion. I don't, I used to tell people, I don't care what happened 35 years ago. I care about what's happening today. Because 35 years ago, I was in diapers. Well, no, I was 10. I might have been in diapers. But again, I, I don't care what happened 35 years ago. I look at what the person's done, and, and let me tell you, if you held me accountable for things I did at 15, 16, 17, 18, I wouldn't be here.
So from the police department perspective, is if you want to get a background check, that should be stated, like the solicitor said, in the application. They should be directed on how to get it, whether the town's gonna get it through, directly through the Attorney General's office, or that if the burden is on the applicant to go get a copy of their record. The police department does not have the authority or the right to get it and then supply it here. Do you understand what I'm saying? I can't go run, I can, I can physically go run someone's BCI and look at it for criminal investigation purposes, but I can't report it back here.
You can't report it back here.
For, for a board membership.
Unless the individual, if there was a...
But if they checked something off agreeing to it?
No, the police department does not have the right to do that. We're not the keeper of the records. So if you made a rule, like the school department has the authority under state law that people that need to get a background check for mentorship or school department employment, they can either go to the state police, their local police department, or the Attorney General's office. So that gives us the authority to access those things.
Right.
And report back to them.
And if there's a disqualifying event or information, that's yours.
Then that panel, we don't make the decision on what's disqualifying. We'll report it, what it is.
Well, I think it's in law, and I think as schools, it makes it clear what's disqualifying.
Right, it is clear.
But the bottom line is, if the onus is on the prospective applicant to produce their record, at that point in time, the council can look at the record to make a determination whether it's applicable or not in addressing the application. So you could address it by saying, have you been convicted of a crime in the last 10 years, last 20 years? Something like that, but it's all up to you. But, and again, when you look at the results from the BCI and the NCIC, you can make the determination as to whether or not you're gonna approve or not approve the application.
Correct. So I, I believe that it should be done, certainly going forward, and I wouldn't object to it being done.
And again, just 'cause somebody might have something, doesn't mean they might, they're not gonna be able to serve. It's just a matter of...
Depends on what it is. That's correct.
But remember, there's a couple of other things that I think you're overlooking. In the charter, it says, you know, you have to be a qualified elector.
Yes.
Now, if you happen to move out of town with an intention of moving back, once you move out of town, you're no longer a qualified elector, which means you can't sit on that seat.
Correct.
So that needs to be addressed.
I mean, it clearly has to be in accordance with the charter, which, by the way, also needs work, just say.
It's a lot of work. You need to put a charter review committee together, but you have to do that every 10 years?
Yes.
Whatever. But we can look into that. I thought it was 10. But again, we haven't done it in over 10 years, so, and if I remember correctly, it was Sean Hensler.
Sean Hensler was the last.
It does, so that clearly needs to be done as well. So I, I do believe we are going in the right direction. We need checklists, we need job descriptions, we need an applicant. It'd be nice if it was electronic. It'd be nice if it was electronic, it would be, bring us to the mandate.
The roles and responsibilities, that's something I, I've been trying to get with Paula and the town clerk, is getting emails. Nobody has emails for all these chairmen that are on these boards, like, they, no way to get in touch with them.
Well, that doesn't make sense.
That needs to be in place as well, we need to be able to do that.
I wanna be able to reach out to each...
There was the member last week, we heard, and we didn't know he moved, right? Which, was that the...
On the recreation.
No, but, but again...
You're getting, you're getting, you're getting a little far upstream from the checklist issue.
So, 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 listen, yes, I, I, this is a discussion item, I would agree that we, we maybe make it something formal at the next meeting, or...
Right, I, I agree, I, I don't think this should take as long as the signs for the ice.
Clearly not, clearly not.
We should really be moving on this. I just have one question on the B C I, though, it's for the chief. So, if we, if we go this route, which I'm not saying we're going to, and people come with, with part of the process is the, is the background check, and it's done by the town, like, we have 15 appointments up, and whether this clerk or H R director gives you a list of these 15 people?
That's the thing, they're not gonna give us the list.
No.
The Attorney General's office is the keeper of records.
Correct.
They deal directly with the Attorney General's office as far as supplying the proof of identification, the fee to run the check and get the report.
It's easy enough.
So, you have no role in this at all, basically?
Under this circumstance, the way our rules are that we access to B C I and N C I C, the F B I's database, we, I can look at it for law enforcement purposes, but not for...
Boards and commissions.
Boards and commissions, that's not a permitted use.
It costs, it costs $5, I got it just last week, we had this conversation, so I could volunteer somewhere, it's five bucks, and it takes...
For the state, for the national one, it's 35.
Okay, but for the state one, it takes...
But you need to decide, do you need a national one, or...
But most, most coaches in sports have to go get them now anyway, so it's, it's not like...
They get the national one?
It's like a, no, usually it's the B C F and state.
No, I'd pay 29.99.
It's not out of the ordinary.
The fingerprint card plus 35 dollars.
Right.
Get your, get your alias.
Jerry?
Can I just make, make a recommendation? I would just recommend that they actually go through Attorney General's office and not use the Rhode Island judiciary. I had my B C I printed yesterday, and contrary to everything everybody wanna say all over Facebook, it was reduced to misdemeanor, but just everybody has it on record, so they should really be doing background checks.
I, I would tend to agree with you.
And that's, and that's from the, that was from the state at the...
Which I supplied...
At the A G's office?
And to follow it up, the Rhode Island, the Rhode Island judiciary portal, portal is, is not the actual record that says that, that it's not a certified record.
What is not the...
What's on the portal.
Okay.
'Cause it's subject to mistakes and errors and...
So, should we, should, should we insist on the national check, then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I, I would, I, why not?
And they, no, no, we shouldn't, now, they, they can get, where do they have to go to get that one?
I just wanna point out something right now, ladies and gentlemen, wait, I just wanna point this out. Jay, you guys have all been here for two, going on three years. You've seen how hard it is to fill these boards and commissions. They're not getting paid a lot of money, they're not getting paid, some are not even getting paid at all. And you're now gonna ask them to pay 35 dollars to come onto a board, and some of them don't even have, they, they honestly don't have it. And you're gonna, that, that's my only concern. It's tough enough to get people to come to these boards, you know? Bert, I'm gonna use you as an example, you're on Board of Elections. If I'm charging you 35 dollars to come onto the Board of Elections after, after, 'cause you're gonna renew every couple of years, are we gonna have him do a background check, 'cause he might have done something the last two years we don't know about? What'd you do, Bert? Is he gonna, is he gonna pay the 35 dollars? Bert, are you gonna pay, and, and I know you're not gonna pay.
Let me ask you a question, is, is it, now, now, currently, they have to be, they have to live in the town. Is it per charter, like, what if, what if we had, like, town employees that were willing to be on some boards, or, or people that were local business owners that were interested in being, that are vested in the community as well? Would those, would, would that be something...
Usually it says you have to be a qualified elector, which means if you don't live in the town, you're not a qualified elector.
So...
This is becoming a...
Yes, I, I think, again, I think it's a healthy discussion, I think we all agree that we need to improve it. We also need to improve the, the communication, even when we appoint someone, people don't know how, how to go about being sworn in, people don't understand what the schedules, uh, meeting schedules are, so we need, we need to do a better job as a group.
I have a question. When am I getting the new applications? Because I have a lot of people that their terms are already up, that their appointments were tabled last meeting.
By next council meeting, we should have something approved, and then you can hand it out.
And they do get notified to come in to get sworn in once they're appointed. The problem I have is a lot of these boards, that, like, I'm in control of the zoning board, Tracy's in control of the pension board. We know when the meetings are being held, we know what times, what, you know, how many times a month. Other boards, like Juvenile Hearing Board, Recreation Committee, they come to me and ask me, well, I haven't heard anything. I don't know when the meetings are. I come across that, and I tell them, I don't know. I give them the phone numbers, sometimes I can't get ahold of these people. I don't know if they meet, I don't know anything. So, that's another situation that we're coming across, I don't know if these people are meeting.
In response to that, Paula, I think you, I think there needs to be a, a mainstream process to this, and everyone should know. There should be a, I would think, a posting of, not, not just on the, on the computer, but posting everywhere where this is when the, the pension board meets, the finance committee meets, the planning board meets, first Monday of every month.
Well, those are up in our hallway, and, you know, like, our canvas board meetings, and we post them in three places. I mean, Sewer Commission emails me their agendas, I post it in the hallway. Plannings are posted in the hallway, Pension, Town Council, Kent County Water, they come and post their own. But these other boards and commissions, I don't know if they meet. And the people who are getting appointed to these boards don't know when they meet. And then, when I give them the content, information that I have in my books, people don't answer, their phone numbers change, something changes, but they're not notifying the clerk's office.
One thing we need to look at is this application form, and, you know, it has date, new appointment, reappointment, board and commissioner, committee that you wanna go on, name, street address, mailing address. Nowhere on, there's email, but that all has to be filled out, because...
But if they move...
You know, I've come to you, and I, and I know I've gone to Mary Ann, and I've asked for, I need emails for every chairperson so I can sit down with them and get a job description, like, like Al Haru, I can reach out to him via email and phone number and say, hey, Al, can we sit down and discuss, or can you and your group or your committee put a job description and responsibility together so we can have that, and then we can all look at that and say, okay, here's the job description. Now, anybody wants to come in, I, I, I forgot your name. He wants to come in and apply for a board and say, what does that board do? I don't know how many times people have come in and asked me, what does that board do? Attend the meeting and find out, is basically what I tell them.
No, this should be a synopsis.
And, and if, if I could say, here's your responsibilities, here's the, the job description, you could do that, as a clerk. You can handle job descriptions for any board and commission, and hand it to anybody who comes in. That's what I'm saying, I need, I need all the contact information.
So, that's all part of what we need to do, to strengthen the entire process and the communication, yes.
And then, when these people move, change their phone numbers, they don't contact the office either. So, I don't have the new updated information.
But that would be on you, though, that would be on them as, as a member of that board
Yeah.
to say, I'm, I'm no longer in town, or I changed my cell phone number, or I don't wanna be on the board anymore.
I do send out letters when the reappointments are up. Sometimes I get them back, sometimes I don't, I send them letters to come in to get sworn in.
And again, reappointments, they should be refilling out this application, not just sending us an email saying, I wanna be reappointed.
Well, I think we all agree that the system needs to be tied up quite a bit, because it's, it's very loose.
Just please don't take a long time, because I do have a lot of members that are expired right now, and then more, and more is coming up.
So, question is, I guess, for Ernie and Tim, is what responsibility here, as, we're the town council, we don't technically work for the town. So, for us to put something together, meaning we're not for the opposition, we, we put something together, as I do something, Mary Beth does, John, Jay, Dave, we all put this together, we could have differences of opinion on what we want on different things. Who creates that master form? And does it have to be done at a town council meeting, or could that be done by...
My suggestion would be, if all five members of the council wanna put together recommendations, you'd have one workshop, where that would be the only thing on the agenda, you would agree to say 10 or 15 items that you want. It'd be produced probably by myself and Ernie through the clerk's office, put it all together, and then you guys would vote on the final product. And in that way, it would become an ordinance, as long as it doesn't, you know, go afoul of either the charter or any statutes or any of the, of the charter itself. So, if you incorporate everything by statute, charter, and ordinance into your application, so everything's covered, all you guys really then have to do is put together the format, so you may think, you know, I want a B C I that goes back 15 years. Maybe Jay wants 25, maybe Dave wants 20, happy medium's 20, so you could debate that. But for the most part, you wanna hit all the high points of what you guys are looking for, and again, that's why I think it's easier to have an application by board and commission, because then you know what you're looking for. Ask them to produce a resume if they can, so instead of, if somebody wants to be on the pension board and says, you know, I've been in the environment my entire life, well, maybe you wanna be something besides the pension board, you know what I mean?
Right.
But that way, if you have one workshop, everybody brings their ideas, put them all together, codify it, and then present a document, then you could vote on it.
Okay, thanks.
And, and there is, there's some guideline in the, in the charter telling us what powers and duties are of various boards and commissions, not all of them, but some of them.
But if you wanna change the charter as it relates to serving at the pleasure of, that would have to be a charter amendment.
Yes.
So, if there's something in the charter that's possibly outdated?
You're not, we're not on the charter?
Yeah, we can't talk about it, unfortunately.
We don't wanna violate the O M A.
Any other comment on that? Thank you, we have to go over to B C I.
We don't have to, yeah, that was covered in the last one, so we can skip forward.
Public comment, Sewer Used Board, Warwick Public Library, West Warwick Public Library Trustees, Board of Tenant Affairs, Board of Assessment and Review, Board of Canvas Registration, Kent County Water Authority, and Recreation Committee. Public comment, anything from the council? Anything from the public? Come on, do you have something?
It's just something, Richard, it's kind of a neat point, but I still would like to, and if it helps any. The animal shelter does require a B C I, I don't know what they do with it, but we do check off a box that says to have a B C I. Um, this was just regarding the real Jerry Lee in the pension board. Obviously, Shannon from the shelter, I was a volunteer in this town. It was my second home for nearly five years until November 2017, when the town decided they were no longer allowed. Since then, I have followed the politics of the town, I have never claimed to be political, and honestly, this whole situation reminded me why. My point is, yes, I am an outsider who has been paying attention. What I see is bothersome, could just be me and my political ignorance, but dang, it is ugly. I do believe all involved have the best interest of the town at heart in their own way. As much as it is denied, the personal agendas, vendettas, or whatever you wanna call them is the problem. So, to see Jerry Lee, yes, my brother-in-law, married to my sister, my world, who I'd be first in line to tell if he was a bad guy, to be painted like a villain is just sad. To get to know him, his past and all, and to learn to love him like family has been an honor. It saddens me due to the finger pointing and personal agendas, not everyone gets to do the same. I have listened to people come up here for over a year now and say, for the record. So, as much as I feared actually standing up here to defend my own place in this town, I feel it is time I said something for the record. So, to whom it may concern, Jerry applied for not only one board but two, having served on the first for a year. Why? Because his intentions were true, doesn't have to have stake in the pensions exactly, because that alone should prove it is about helping where help is needed, doing your part selfless, selflessly. Shouldn't that prove that there is no agenda? But no, what I see is regardless of his past, there would be an issue. A past that, yes, maybe he could have expunged, and instead, he owned it, which I will now own, shame on me for my political ignorance and my faith in humanity for encouraging Jerry to do just that. Own it because your real past, present, and future speaks for itself, it will show your true intentions, and people will see that. Well, shame on me, instead, instead, a news channel took what was brought to them as a hot topic and ran with it. What I saw in that story was a fallen officer in the same month as the 25th anniversary of his death, and what the family and loved ones felt seeing it. It is still very fresh for my own personal tragedy, but I can guarantee if I had to relive it on the news 25 years later, it would still be like it was yesterday. And just the nerve to put it out there, I just can't. That horrified me more than what happened nearly 20 years ago. So, yes, as for the brotherhood and the men in blue that sacrifice every day, I do absolutely and completely feel and respect for the solidarity. What I don't agree with is the reasons and how you were dragged into it, but please trust me when I say I fully understand. So, now, for the record, I publicly apologize to Jerry Lee, because I truly thought owning your past would prevail. But that wasn't the case, and I'm sorry. I never expected to see something with the truest of intentions get turned into something so ugly because of vendettas and people not being able to move forward and work together in spite of political agendas and personal feelings. As much as I would like to say, you're lost, Wes Warwick, like I did with my situation, knowing Jerry, he won't. He will still try, I mean, like, he will still serve his town, he is a bigger person than I am. And that's it, I know it's a mute point, but I just still felt with everything that just happened and went on, that it needed to be said, so, that's all. I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye.
Goodbye, everybody.